Who's up first?
I'll go first. Hi, I'm here to talk about swim team. I'll try to make it quick because I have swim practice. So, our high school swim team is a co-op with Nishoba, Hudson, and Clinton. And this is my second year on it, which is pretty amazing considering most people at our school don't know we have a swim team. And no, we don't practice on the fourth floor pool because it doesn't exist, although many think it does. I love being on a co-op swim team because it gives me the chance to meet people that I would never know otherwise. And it not only applies to the other teams, but to Marlboro as well. I would not be friends with a lot of the Marlboro girls if I was on the swim team. And we're all really close and we do team bondings a few times every week. And we have two meets every week, sometimes three. I swim four events every meet, one of them being the 500 freestyle, which is 20 laps. Yeah, I know. I cringe every time I see my name on the lineup next to the 500, but someone has to do it because no one likes it. And we recently did a swim for hunger to raise money for the food pantry. I did roughly 75 laps in 30 minutes, which you think 20 laps is really difficult, but 75 is way more difficult. And in conclusion, I guess I'd just like to say that this co-op team has been an incredible opportunity and I think it'd be amazing if our school had more co-op programs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you know, I know we have hockey, girls hockey co-op?
Yeah.
And tennis is a co-op? Not anymore? Is tennis still a co-op? With answer. Any other co-ops?
We're not sure.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Who's next?
I'm Hattie Parker. I'm the ninth grade class representative. Today, I would like to talk to you about the Panther periods that we have every Wednesday at the high school. The ninth grade class actually had something similar to the Panther periods in our sixth grade year, but they were taking away from us because we weren't using our time very efficiently. And I think that we've definitely learned from our mistake as we've matured and we really appreciate the Panther periods this year. Most of the ninth grade class uses them to do things like study, do their homework, catch up on missing assignments. We try our best to use our time efficiently. Sometimes, our time isn't always used as efficiently as we could due to unproductive class meetings that we sometimes have as a collective freshman class and overcrowded classrooms where it gets hard to kind of do your work when there are so many students trying to do so many different things. But overall, I'd just like to say that we really value the time that we get for about an hour every Wednesday to just really catch up on our work and try our best to be productive. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Hattie.
Alicia, sneak up there.
Hi, I'm Alicia and I'm a junior at Marlboro High School. And I'm involved in many different sports, but I'm here to talk about track, winter track this season. I've been involved with track since my freshman year, three years of running. Love running. The coaches are really great. They always push us to do our best. I typically train mid-distance, so Dave Mariani, he's our coach. We love him. We all joke around with him. And then Downing is our coach for distance. But we all kind of are like a big family. They all coach each other. And I personally, I run anywhere from a 400 meter to the 55 hurdles. So, I pretty much run a wide variety. This season, the girls only have a little under 20 girls on our team, so compared to previous years, not that many girls. But because of our low numbers, we kind of lose some of our meets by points-wise compared to Westboro who has 40 to 50 girls and Wachusett who has over 100 girls. But, I mean, we make the best of it. We work really hard. And even though we have a small team, we have a great group of girls who work hard and we improve every day. We're definitely getting faster based on our times. And our next meet is tomorrow against Pittsburgh, in Pittsburgh at 5:00. Yes. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the committee?
Well, so you opened yourself up with saying only about 20. So, would that be something that we could look and see whether there are opportunities for co-opping with other, you know, another track team maybe?
Definitely, yeah.
To just see if there are some other, like, smaller track teams to try and join you guys together?
Yeah. Like, I know we're having a meet with Hudson this year, which is new, at our track. And I know they have a small team too, so maybe that could be...
Maybe it's something to investigate.
Yeah, yeah.
Mariani.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, unfortunately, Sidney couldn't be with us tonight. She's at a rehearsal. But she was going to talk about the music department and I figure I can cover that. So, we recently had a very successful fifth grade concert a few weeks ago. These kids have just picked up their instruments in September and they learned how to play and put on a performance for the holidays. And it was, it was really cool to be able to see those kids grow and mature into budding musicians. Coming up tomorrow, we have a seventh and eighth grade concert. So, these are the kids that have been playing for two or three years, joined with their peers who have been playing for only one year or less than one year. And then on the 15th of January, we have our sixth grade concert. Those are the intermediate kids who have been playing for one or two years. We're also putting on West Side Story, the musical. That will happen on March 29th, 30th, and 31st. So, I came from rehearsal, run of this meeting, and then I'm going to run back to rehearsal, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions in the committee?
Who are you playing?
I'm playing Tony.
Oh. I know who he is.
Thank you very much. What are we doing?
MEF.
I MEF Grant Awards.
Who's on deck?
So, I know you guys need to vote to fund then?
Val, Val, you need to talk into them. I thought you had no voice. It's back.
Well, I've been hanging all afternoon to try to get my breath up.
I'm recovering from the flu and when I tried to talk this afternoon, I would just start coughing, so I've been trying to force my breath. So, I know we need to, you guys vote the gift in, right? Do we do that before we hand them out or after?
No, we'll take it up in the gifts later on.
All right. So, I updated our grant history this afternoon. I didn't have a chance to print it out, but we have given grants for 19 years, since 1997. We missed a year a couple of years ago because a lot of people left and we almost folded. So, we didn't give grants out that year while we recruited people so we could keep going and we have kept going. We have given out 177 different grants over the 19 years and we just surpassed the $200,000 mark. So, since that money goes to teachers for projects in their classrooms, we've probably helped 10,000 students with this money. Because most of these grants go for more than one year and because they often cover an entire school or an entire grade level, we just have helped. It's a really, really great bang-for-your-buck program for the city of Marlboro. So, this year, we're awarding $7,100.04 in grants. And so, the first one, oh, we got applications from every school except the Early Childhood Center and we gave a grant to every school. So, it's...
Not Draric.
Yes, we did. Kelly.
Kelly's at Whitcomb.
Oh, Whitcomb, are you at Whitcomb now?
Yeah.
That's, okay.
Five years.
So, that's me not keeping up with my old friend Kelly, so.
Everyone's smart as well.
Longtime friend Kelly. So, okay, so the first grant goes to Kelly Hall of Whitcomb and we're awarding $1,070 to fund the purchase of a green screen and the accompanying tools that will allow the fifth grade students to produce stop-motion animation and videos using green screen. And we were really excited when we read this grant because we think that the teacher, that Kelly and the teacher she will be teaching how to use these tools and sharing this with are basically starting to prepare fifth graders for real-world jobs and preparing them for jobs that we don't even know, have any idea will exist yet. So, we all were for this, Kelly, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, so the next one is we're awarding $2,062.66 to Susan Rosenthal. And is it Sarah Ryder?
Sarah Cleary.
Sarah Cleary, at Richer School to purchase tools to create regulation zones, which helps students identify what they are feeling when a student is in an emotional state that inhibits their ability to access the curriculum. This has been, this was a project that they researched and it's based on, is it a child psychologist, Laura?
She was an occupational therapist and she created something called the Zones of Regulation.
Right.
And it's four zones and kids identify what zone they're in and the optimal learning zone is the gray zone.
Right. So, their goal, their goal is to assist students in learning how to self-regulate themselves by helping them create a toolbox to draw from when they become dysregulated. The funds purchase the toolboxes and items for the toolboxes. Okay, next, we're giving $1,454 to Katie Spasick for the three-in-one easel for students at Kane. Katie, who travels between classrooms, has a hard time adapting technology when she doesn't have a dedicated space, so the three-in-one easel is technology which will allow her to adapt to whatever workspace is available. This technology can be used as an easel, a table, and can be projected on the floor. She wants to first use it to enhance the math curriculum at Kane and then for other The next grant is to Allison Cox, who's a librarian at the high school, and the English teachers at the high school. We're granting $400 to purchase high-low books for the high school library. These books will supplement the collection, which was created last year to encourage and assist English learners and struggling and reluctant readers to read. The publishers Allison and the EL teacher chose provide books that are attractive in format and subjects and appropriate for high school audiences. The program has proven to be beneficial to both English learners and struggling and reluctant learners. The next grant is also going to Whitcomb and it's to Mark Rodriguez. Is Mark here?
No.
He is the engineering, the engineering teacher for STEM and we're granting him $2,117.98 to purchase a 3D printer and repair other non-working technology that he also uses in his engineering classes. So, do you want to take this from Mark, Kelly? Okay.
Thank you.
And that was, those were the five that we granted and once again, it was a fun process. It's always fun to be able to get together and give teachers money.
Do you want to introduce everyone?
Sure. So, this is Sue Pearl. She has been our clerk for the last couple of years. Ayako Barnum, who's been on MEF for four or five years now, and Mike Rossi, Mike Rossi is our vice president.
Treasurer.
Treasurer, that's right. We switched positions last year. And what I, what I wanted to mention, leading back from how much money and how much we have helped the Marlboro Public Schools is, like most small organizations in the city, we need volunteers. We're actually going to be sending a letter out to teachers, asking them for their assistance and maybe pinpointing some people who would be interested in our organization. It's not a huge time commitment like a lot of organizations are. We do four or five meetings a year. We have a couple of fundraisers that we've been doing for quite a while now, so we basically have them down in a very efficient and effective manner. And if anybody is looking for an organization you can donate a little bit of time to that does, gives a huge impact to students within the school system, go to our website, mefonline.org. There's information, all of our contact information is there. Please contact one of us and we're a friendly group, so please join us if you can, if you can donate maybe 10 hours a year to something like this. So, thank you again for a great year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, move to move-up action item A.
Moving up. Action item A, Business Professionals of America Leadership Conference. Any discussion? All those in favor, pose carries.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Nope, you need to tell us why you're here.
Okay. I'm Jane Haley. I am the advisor of Business Professionals of America, which is the business club at the high school. We do fundraising and we do community service projects throughout the year and we do academic competitions twice a year. So, we go to the state competition the first weekend in March and we always go to the Sheridan and Tara. And that's why I'm here to ask for your approval so that the students and the chaperones have approval to go to the Sheridan and Tara the first weekend in March for that academic competition. And those who do well go on to nationals. We're going to California this year and that will be May 1 through 4.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start by asking the committee to consider a volunteer to help us with the principal search committee. We're trying to keep the interview committee down to seven people, so I'm hoping that there can be a volunteer who would like to participate. Looks like Ms. Ryan is willing to volunteer. That makes things a lot easier when someone raises their hand. We've posted the position. We're going to do a paper screening and then we're going to go into the interview process. So, we'd love to have you, if it's the will of the committee.
Go for it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just wanted to update some folks on my entry plan. I want to thank everyone who participated in the survey that I posted online. I received close to 200 responses and every response I received was fully filled out. So, that is not common when you do online surveys, so I appreciate that. I want to thank everyone again for the time that they've put in to give me the information to come back to you. So, in early March, I'll be bringing my entry plan findings to the committee to bring that to you so you can also see what I, what my findings have been, what I've learned, and also how this can affect our strategic plan for the future. So, thank you again. I wanted to take a moment and on the next couple pages of the school committee packet, you'll notice that we kind of have a roundup of all the business partnerships that have just been fantastic this year. We've received a lot of support and I want to try to do this on a biannual basis, just so the school committee can reflect on all the different partners that we have and all the generous donations of not only money, equipment, and time that they do. So, I, I feel like this is a really positive thing for the community and we want to encourage it. So, as we continue to work with our partners within the city, namely, we're doing a lot of work right now with MEDC and some of our other partners, this is important for us to understand where we are, so that way we can reach out to even more people and try to get them involved in the school and involve in all the good things we're doing. So, just wanted to give you that update. If you have any questions on that, feel free to email me. At a recent leadership team meeting, we were reviewing the mission and core values and there was a clear consensus that there should be an update to this. It's been some time since we looked at it and there's some, some pieces of it that we thought were repetitive and possibly we can update it for the times we're in now. So, before we move forward and really jump into the vision piece, we really felt it was important to bring this policy back up, to look at it and potentially ask for some adjustments. So, I was going to ask the policy committee to maybe start the work, but I didn't know if it was the pleasure of the full committee to do it as, at a school committee meeting, so.
If I can just jump in here, we actually did have that conversation with you about this and I thought our consensus at our policy subcommittee meeting was that we felt uncomfortable for it just to be the subcommittee discussing it, since it really was a broader issue. So, I think it would be a better idea to make sure that we're all actively involved in it, so that we're not trying to piecemeal it together in a couple of different sessions with different groups if possible.
Understood. Yeah, no, that, that helps.
Well, and since we have a planned workshop, we can add that on to it, I would assume, right? Does it...
I would, I would really suggest that.
I was going to suggest, being that the workshop is going to be around goal-setting, that it might be kind of a natural part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Assistant Superintendent, Teacher in Learning.
I just wanted to add...
You adding?
I'm adding.
All right, go for it.
I did not see MEF on your list of partners.
We created the list before we had the total.
You could have put us on there.
Put MEF on the list before the Grants and Awards.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on the whole, on this thing. No, I don't mean in the gift, I don't mean what we're doing today.
On the spreadsheet.
On the spreadsheet of participating organizations, you had other grant-making, like the Brigham Trust and other things.
Okay.
But MEF wasn't listed as a partner and that's the whole purpose of MEF's existence.
Understood. Okay.
Thanks.
I suppose made it tonight, but...
Right. I know it was an accident.
That's because you came so late on Friday.
What?
Are we good?
It was Friday.
I'm good with my report.
Thank you. I just wanted to update the committee on the district-wide ALIS training. We are going to be applying for an ALIS organizational certificate this year, which is something a little bit different. We have worked with the police department in the past to do ALIS drills and we have trained our staff, but this year, every single employee in the Marlboro Public Schools is also going to be certified in ALIS, doing an online training. In the last week, we have certified 466 employees. The rest of the employees will be trained throughout this month between the Professional Development Day and department meetings. The other thing that I wanted to update you with on, it was the Boys and Girls Club tutoring. Today was the first day that the Marlboro Public Schools and the Boys and Girls Club entered into a partnership to provide tutoring on-site at the Boys and Girls Club. Two afternoons a week, two teachers, tutors from the Marlboro Public School are going to be at the Boys and Girls Club. They were meeting students, they were getting a space, and they will be emailing teachers on a regular basis with the students that they'll be working with, so they'll know exactly what they're working at. The superintendent asked in the very beginning, when he started over the summer, if we are not getting students at the secondary level to stay after school, as much as we'd like, let's go to them. So, this is phase one of trying to go out to the community and create more partnerships for tutoring opportunities throughout the city.
Awesome.
Any questions from the committee?
Just a statement, I'm thrilled. I think it's awesome that you're doing that.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say thank you to Chris Dwayne of Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
Superb.
Anyone else? Minutes of November 27, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Minutes of December 11, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Public participation. Need public participation? Public participation. Seeing none. FY '19, operating budget transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in front of you today, you have three pages of transfers for your consideration. If you don't mind, I'll just briefly go through these with you. On the very first page, we have requests for Hildreth, the ECC, Draric, and Kane. These are standard transfers where we had some slight overages in salary lines that are being filled with efficiencies also from salary lines from those same buildings. On the second page there, we have Richer, Whitcomb, and Marlboro High. Richer and Whitcomb are again the same. We have overages in salary lines that are being filled with efficiencies in salary lines also within those same buildings. On the Marlboro High cluster of transfers here on the bottom of the page, I do want to point out that I'm requesting to transfer $59,000 from a Whitcomb salary account into a Marlboro High salary account, the reason being there was a SPED program that moved from Whitcomb to Marlboro High and the staff member moved as well. So, that's why we're asking for the funds to change buildings there. On the last page, we have some district-wide transfers. On the top cluster, I do want to point out two particular transfers. One is for $39,352,000 into our contracted services line. That will eventually be utilized to pay for the redistricting consultants that we're working with. We're also requesting $36,575 to go into our legal services line. The funds for those transfers are coming from salary efficiencies, summer programming efficiencies, as well as the salary reserve line. The last cluster of transfers are all within our special education department. We had some overages in outer district transportation, as well as summer transportation, McKinney-Vento transportation. And to fill that gap, we're utilizing efficiencies within special education, as well as salary reserve funds. I know it's a lot and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Next month, there will be zero overdraft budget lines on the budget.
I love that.
I was going to say, are you happy now?
As can you shall be given.
I'm not happy yet. I'll see you next month.
Motion to approve.
Questions from the committee? Any data motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Policies.
Just for fun. So, as you can tell, we've been pretty busy and we are continuing to keep on working down the line. I would ask, if possible, if we might be able to make a motion for a suspension of the rules so that we could potentially vote on the policy 1.100 nondiscrimination, as that was really just a name change of making sure that Mr. Bergeron's name was on there as opposed to Ms. Grulick's name and a logo change up in the top. So, if you all would be open to it.
Maintain a motion to suspend the rules and vote on policy number 1.100.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries.
Thank you very much. The remainder policies, which I'll quickly run through to make sure that everybody hears them, most of these are a part of Chapter 2, which we are just trying to work through and make sure we are updating. So, policy 2.210, powers and duties. 2.333, duties of secretary. 2.340, school committee superintendent relationship. 2.350, subcommittees. 2.400, school committee meetings. 2.421, regular meetings. 2.432, special meetings. 2.441, rules of order. 2.442, order of business. 2.442.1, presentation. 2.442.2, communications. 2.442.3, superintendent's report. As well, then, in chat... As well, then, in Chapter 7, 7.191, student fees. Really, just a highlight on that is more an acknowledgement that across the board, it is our hope to actually limit any kind of fees, as we've been doing that year after year on trying to limit down the fees when we've done our annual budget. Chapter 8.100, attendance. And this was a very minor cleanup, as this was recently spoken about, I think just within the last few years. Chapter 9.1, policy 9.200, home education. So, those are the policies that I'd like to put forward for first read.
Thank you very much. Any questions on those policies?
No, but we suspended to vote on the first one, so we, we didn't take the vote. We only voted in suspension.
Motion approved. Policy 1.100. Any discussion on the approval? All those in favor, pose carries.
Thank you. So, next action item would be the policies for removal, which we're just trying to, again, clean up the policy manual, if you will. So, the policy 3.620, which is regarding bid level, that is specifically because that's already covered within certain statutes, so.
Mass General Law already lays out in Chapter 30B, Chapter 149, and Chapter 32M, I believe, already has all of the bid level policies in law. Additionally, the city charter also has the bid policies. And just so people are clear, all of our purchasing documents run through the procurement agent of the city as well, so. And this policy is out of date.
That too. So we are looking to, for a removal on that. Policy 3.800, relative to kindergarten fee, we don't have a kindergarten fee. As I just stated before, we're looking to reduce all fees across the board as much as possible, so. And that would also carry forward with the policy 7.190, athletic transportation fee. So those are the three that we're looking for, a agreement to remove those from our books.
Thank you.
If I can, I'd like to make a motion to remove policy 3.620, bid level, policy 3.800, kindergarten fee, and policy 7.190, athletic transportation fee.
Motion made and seconded to remove 3.62, 3.8, and 7.19. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Acceptance of gifts. Cummings Properties LLC, employee-directed giving to Marlboro Early Childhood Center, $1,000.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor, pose carries. Life Touch National School Studios, Kane Elementary School, Whitcomb School, Richer School.
Motion.
$1,187.71 for Kane, $1,453.73 for Whitcomb, and $1,511 for Richer.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Pose Corporation, Richer School students, $21,600.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Cub Scout PAC 41, Richer School families, $275.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Marlboro Education Foundation donating $7,104.79 to Marlboro High School, Whitcomb School, Kane School, Richer, Richer Schools, from Marlboro Education Foundation.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Will we get a detail of who they, that they went to and for what? Since it wasn't provided in the packet?
Yes, we will.
Great.
I think she probably had it and forgot to give it to us, but I will make sure that we all can, yes.
On the motion to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Reports of the school committee subcommittees. Any reports? Seeing none. Members' forum. Ms. Matthews.
I've reviewed the warrant and will sign it.
You what?
Reviewed the warrant and will sign it.
Fantastic. Any, any other members?
So I just, I want to mention.
The Marlboro Education Foundation for their donation of $7,100.
Hey, we do good work, thank you. No, I just wanted to profile Jill Moran and her amazing YouTube videos that everyone should be watching on a regular basis, but she outdid herself today and had me crying in the middle of work. You should check out today's latest video regarding EL students and their MCAS scores. It was, it helps you remember why we do all this work. So I, I highly suggest anyone, you can see it on Facebook, you can see it on YouTube, you can see it on the website, I presume, Instagram. It's great.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of Jill's good work.
Absolutely. She's doing a great job.
Any other members?
Oh, do we want to mention this?
Sure.
Panther Pride is out.
I just want to thank the Main Street Journal for producing another version of Panther Pride, and highlighted right in the front, if you can, it's hard to see the picture, but it's, it's the picture of when Commissioner Jeff Riley came to STEM Week at Whitcomb. So again, just want to thank the Main Street Journal, Jim Ash, all the people who worked there, and everyone who contributed.
Thank you very much. Any other members? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, pose carries. Thank you very much.